Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting for Monday, July 27th, 2020 to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda. Keep in mind that we added line items seven Echo and seven Foxtrot for the community center and COVID-19 preparedness plan amendment.
This is Councilmember Progman, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none of our city administrator be kind enough to go ahead and call the roll call for the vote for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye. Thank you. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen soul requests, in which event the item be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. On tonight's consent agenda, we have two items. We have the city council minutes for July 13th, 2020, and we have dispersment approval through July 27th, 2020. Any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts, ideas? Hearing none, entertain a motion then to go ahead and approve tonight's consent agenda.
Member Favelas, so moved.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please?
Progman, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Progman. Any discussion? Hearing none again, if our city administrator be kind enough to go ahead and do the roll call for the consent agenda for tonight.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Do we have anybody that has signed up to go ahead and address city council tonight?
No, Mayor, I have not received any requests for public comment.
Okay, we're not showing any hands at this time?
I will give them a second. If there is anybody that would like to participate in public comment on anything not on the agenda, please just indicate by raising your hand on the application. There's now 11 people in attendance. I have not seen anybody raise their hand.
Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to close public comment for tonight's meeting.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Hearing none, the city administrator crew will be kind enough to go ahead and take the vote for closing public comment for tonight's meeting.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye. Thank you. Public hearings. Tonight, we have on the docket a public hearing for our TIF 20, public hearing for the Business Subsidy for Building Good Downtown LLC. City Administrator Krugel?
Yes, Mayor Haig, members of city council. Before you is an item that we called for the public hearing on this TIF, I believe back in June. I'm trying to look at, getting caught up with the notes here. And what this is, is this is the public's chance to come in and discuss either support or if they don't like the proposed TIF for the Business Subsidy with Good Downtown, Building Good Downtown LLC. This is the Valley Green Square Mall developer, and what they're looking at doing is a TIF for that project, a pay-as-you-go TIF. I will hand it off to Community Development Director DiMaggio to go over what this all entails and what we're asking you to approve tonight. If there's anybody after the staff presentation that would like to comment, we solicit them to do so. We will enter their comments into the public record, and we will store that with the file on this public hearing in perpetuity. So I will turn it over to Ms. DiMaggio to give a recap, and then it can go back and see if anybody from the public would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Director DiMaggio, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Haig, members of the council. This evening also have Shannon Sweeney with us. Shannon is our TIF consultant who works for David Drown. So I'm going to go over a few notes on the slide, and Shannon, if you have anything or want to interject at any time, please feel free to do so. Jasper, if you could, please go forward one slide. So the new owners of Valley Green Square Mall, Building Good Downtown LLC, have asked the city of LaSour to establish a redevelopment TIF district. With a redevelopment TIF district, you can do a 26-year TIF. They have asked us for 90% of the TIF. The city of LaSour will actually be maintaining 10% of the TIF. We're going to use that 10% for admin costs. We've kept a little bit more for admin because we're going to use that money to also pay their application fee for the TIF. They haven't paid any money upfront, so any Shannon services, any of the services provided by Mike Corey, things like that can come out of the TIF admin fees as well. As Jasper said, this is a 90% pay-as-you-go TIF. The maximum dispersment that will go to the developer is $452,864. It could take up to 26 years to give that to the developer. If the taxes come in higher than we think, then it could actually close out sooner than 26 years, but through the amount of time, that's what we've come up with. Also, I think it's important, Shannon pointed out during the EDA meeting, it's important to state that the current taxes being paid on the mall will continue to be paid. The TIF that's being generated is from the improvements that they're going to do to the mall. So these improvements include moving the people who live, or the businesses on the second floor to the main floor and putting 14 apartments or 16 apartments, whatever it might be, on the second floor. So how a pay-as-you-go TIF works, if you go to the next slide, we can talk about that a little bit. So a pay-as-you-go TIF works is if it's the developer who's going to take on the financial risks of this. So the developer is going to go to their bank. They're going to take out money to finance the improvements to the mall. The city then is going to, they're going to save their receipts and show them to us as a city, and we're going to reimburse the developer for the qualified expenditures. And so we're going to do that on an annual basis. So once we get the taxes that the business has paid in, that the mall pays in, we basically would take the money and then reimburse them that money. As I said, I think right now the taxes on the mall are around $50,000 a year. Those would stay on the mall. This would just be to capture the improvements, the new taxes that are generated from the mall. So these payments then would go to the developer. They're contingent upon the availability of funds. So we do have one TIF that we're going to talk about here shortly where the developer did not do what they were supposed to do. So therefore, they were not given the TIF. The city actually had some expenditures in here. We reimbursed ourselves, but we did not give the TIF to the developer. And so it's important to know that if they don't carry out what they're supposed to do or do what they've promised us to do to generate this amount of money, they don't get the money. So if you don't create the apartments, if you don't rehab the mall, if the improvements aren't there, if the tax numbers aren't there, then there's nothing for us to reimburse them with. So it's really the developer who carries a ton of the risk with this. The risk that we may have would be the fact that we would put in Main Street, but I think that that's something that we'll have to discuss at a later point, if that's something financially feasible, if we want to bond for that. We have run some numbers that this might generate extra TIF, and if that does happen, then we're hoping to pay the EDA back and the city back for some of the costs that they've incurred. The EDA has given them a $300,000 forgivable loan for the facade, and the city then would probably have some costs in the Main Street. So if there's extra TIF generated, we would like to repay ourselves. So if for some reason, though, if they don't do the work that they do, then we obviously, we don't have the TIF generated, and so we wouldn't be able to pay them back. But it can also go the same way that maybe it just won't generate as much as we think it will. This is just an estimate that we received from Shane with LaSour County. So if for some reason it doesn't come in as high, if it doesn't generate the 450 some thousand dollars we expect, that's not a failure on their part. We would just give them as much as we could. Shannon, do you have anything to add to that, or does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, Jasper, could you go into the next slide, please? As part of the analysis for this, we actually had to have Justin Nielsen, our building official, do some work to try to figure out if this building were to be completely demoed and built from scratch, how much would it cost? And so Justin went through and used the cost from the 2018 International Building Code. So he found out that the building value of the second, first and second floors are approximately 82,000 square feet. In 2018, with the costs that they came out with, to rebuild it per square foot would have been $109. Actually, thinking today's value, that's probably low. It would probably cost even more than that today to rebuild it. That's a pretty fair number. So the estimated replacement costs are about $9 million. If you were to build that building today, it would cost about $9 million. Justin has gone through and looked at all the code deficiencies in the building, and he has come up with it'd be almost $1.5 million to bring that building back up to code. So these are numbers that we will put in our TIF file. He's taken pictures, created a report. This is important to show that this is why the TIF is needed, because obviously, to bring it up to code today is quite expensive, and to rebuild it would really, I don't know that we would find a developer to make that kind of investment of $9 million. And then I went through, I had a great question from Jasper, and I know one of the council members that asked, what TIFs have we done in the past and what have they been used for? So we have Greenfield Estates. That was a housing TIF. Those are the housing that are on King's Way. That was awarded in May of 2000. The total award for that was $339,000. We actually just certified that in 2019, so that's no longer an active TIF. LaSour Meadows, that is one that we're going to discuss a little bit later on tonight. They're currently TIF 14. They were initially awarded their TIF in 2001, and then in 2005, they actually modified their TIF. So they said in their TIF, this is another good example, that they were going to create some, I think they were two-bedroom townhomes, and they never ended up doing that. So if they would have done that, their TIF would have generated about $700,000 a year. But since they didn't do those improvements, they haven't gotten that amount of money. To date, they've been paid $332,000. So as I said, if you don't do the work that you're supposed to, there is no TIF generated. You can't be paid something that isn't generated. That TIF goes until 12/31 of 2022. Bean Super Value, we believe, was Rodamakers. That was a redevelopment TIF that was issued in 2003 for almost $100,000. That did expire in 2019 as well. The city of LaSour had partnered with Comfort Residence. This is the one where I believe that the developer did not do what they were supposed to. This was the housing TIF in 2004. The city of LaSour reimbursed ourselves $216,000, but as I said, the developer didn't receive any of the TIF, and that also expired in 2019. Saint Anne's School at one point had talked about doing a redevelopment, but that never happened. So they were assigned a TIF number, but it never did happen, and that was in 2008. By Mito was given a TIF in 2012, an Economic Development TIF. The total award was $91,000, and that goes until 12/31 of '22. Oak Terrace, which was by far our biggest TIF, that was TIF 19. That was the housing TIF that we issued in 2017, and that was almost $1.8 million. And we're still paying on that TIF. We'll be paying or reimbursing back through 2033. And then tonight, the one that we're talking about would be Building Good Downtown. So that would be a redevelopment TIF. We would issue it tonight. It would be for $452,864, and that would run through 2048, unless the taxes come in higher and we can pay them off earlier.
Question in regards to the Building Good Downtown redevelopment TIF.
Yes, sir.
You have a certification date of December 31st of 2048, but yet we're looking at establishing a 26-year TIF. Wouldn't that bring it out to 2046?
So this is the night that we're issuing it, but it actually doesn't start until they're done with construction, because if they don't go forward and do construction, so we give them a couple of years to get their taxes on the books. It's an excellent question, though, because right now, there really are no taxes for them, and their taxes won't come online. It's almost like when you build a new house, the taxes, it takes a couple of years to catch up. So we give them that couple of years to catch up.
And this is a very minor question, Director DiMaggio, but you're talking about $452,864 on the PowerPoint, but our documents that we have, six alpha for our agenda says $452,862.
Yeah, you know, I had a $2 difference from Shannon, and I don't know if it changed by $2. I noticed that, too, unless it was just a typo somewhere along the way. My initial agenda said $2, and Shannon caught me today at $64, so somewhere we're off by $2.
Draft development agreement indicates 64, so that's why I made the modification.
Perfect, thank you. So yeah, I think initially, maybe it was 62, and then it got, I don't know how it got to 64. It's playing a good game of telephone right now, I think, is what we're doing. Yeah, so, yep, the next slide, Jasper. Okay, so the city council tonight is being asked to authorize TIF 20, the plan that goes along with it, the development agreement, and there's two resolutions that need to be executed. There's 2020-16, which is a resolution adopting the Tax Increment Financing Plan, and Resolution 2020-17, a resolution approving the Business Subsidy and authorizing the EDA to sign the development agreement. So that is my ask of you tonight. I'm not sure if you have any other questions, or if anyone from the public has any questions for Shannon or I.
Do we have anybody, Administrator Krugel, that is indicating that they have their hand up? If so, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Mayor Haig, at this time, we have zero people. Oh, there we got one person. So I will find who it is.
I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion then to go ahead and open the public hearing for TIF 20.
So moved by Sullivan.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call for opening our public hearing for TIF 20.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye. Okay, Administrator Krugel, you say we have somebody that would like to go ahead and address city council regarding the public hearing for the TIF 20?
Yes, sir. We have our county commissioner, John King, who is raising his hand. John, I will unmute you, and you'll be able to speak once you're unmuted. So, John, it looks like I have unmuted you. It looks like you're self-muted, if you want to just hit your unmute button, and you should be good.
There, how's this?
Welcome, Commissioner King. Nice to have you.
Yep, we can hear you, John. We heard Commissioner King for about a second. He said hi, and then now maybe he's having some technical difficulties.
How is this?
We can hear you.
Hear you.
Okay.
Welcome, Commissioner King.
Couple questions. One, and this might be for legal counsel, but how many times can the same parcel of land or property be used for TIF finance? Is there a limit, or is it a one-time in your alter, or can it be re-entered into TIF as soon as the last one's paid off, or how does that work?
There's no limitation. Shannon Sweeney, sorry, from David Drown Associates. There's no limitation on the number of times a property could be in a TIF district, but recognize, for a TIF district to do anything, there has to be a significant increase in market value. So essentially, the developer has to do something of a significant nature in order to increase the market value for a TIF to do anything that would redirect property taxes. And the base market value on what's being contributed to the tax rolls for the county, city, and school district would be reset to the higher value that's in place each time a TIF district would be created. So the bar is set higher based on prior improvements. So while it can happen multiple times, you know, recognize there'd have to be pretty significant modifications to improve the value of this facility each time for there to be a TIF district put in place.
Thank you. And I have one more question. The money's going to be given back to the developer for what was described as legitimate or reasonable expenses. What are those expenses? Is it anything that's involved with the cost of improvement, or are there certain things that it needs to be spent on?
There are very specific items that it needs to be spent on, and it's those, it's basically conditions that allowed us to create the redevelopment district. So anything that isn't up to current code is essentially eligible for reimbursement. In this instance, a lot of that expense will probably go towards roof replacement, HVAC replacement, energy code issues, things like that.
Okay, and at this time, none of the TIF money will be used to finance the replacement of this Main Street. Is that correct?
It's potentially eligible, but there's no agreement in place at this point. Essentially, the city's pledging to reimburse 95% of the tax increment to the developer, up to the specified amount of $452,864, based on the assessor's estimate of market value and what we expect the frozen local tax rate to be. They will use the increment to be generated for those code improvements. We'll retain a little bit for administration beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, this is Mr. Haig, the mayor. Is that 90% or 95%? I think you just said 95%, but our paperwork says 90?
It's 90%. My apologies for the error.
Thank you. And Commissioner King, thank you for those wonderful questions. Anybody else have any other questions from the public?
Mayor Haig, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. I will just note that if anybody would, if you can't make the meeting, you can't, don't have internet access, you can always submit statements in writing as well for the public comment, especially during times when we're having remote meetings like this. That's important, and we will be having potentially another public hearing on a TIF here in a couple of months as well. So if you can't make the meeting, you can always submit it in writing to myself, and we can read those aloud. But right now, I'm not having anybody else raise their hand.
Okay, thank you. That being said, entertain a motion then to close the public hearing for TIF 20.
This is Krogman.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman. Can I get a second, please?
Favela's second.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion?
This is Councilmember Krogman. Let me clarify, or ask the city administrator to clarify. If we vote on this tonight, we're not going to be, the hearing's over if we vote on this motion, and we can vote to establish this TIF tonight. So it would be other TIFs where comments could be submitted in writing. It's too late if we vote yes on this one. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yep, good clarification if I misspoke. Yep.
I don't want to mislead the public, and I know that was not your intent, but just so everybody's understanding.
Yep.
So that being said, would it be wise to take action on tonight, or should we go ahead and postpone at this point to see if there's anybody else from the public?
Mr. Mayor, this is, we've given notice. I don't see any reason to wait. I just wanted to clear.
That is correct. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second to close the public hearing. If I get our city administrator to go ahead and do roll call to close public hearing for TIF 20?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye.
Thank you.
So now entertain a motion to authorize the TIF 20 Plan Development Agreement and Execution of Resolution Romeo 2020-016, a resolution on the adoption of the Tax Increment Financing Plan, and Resolution Romeo 2020-017, a resolution approving the Business Subsidy and authorizing the Economic Development Authority of the City of LaSour to execute the development agreement.
Favela's so moved.
Sir?
Sullivan, second.
Can I get, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and do the roll call for the vote for the requested action for TIF 20?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye. And Mr. Sweeney, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the LaSour City Council for all the work you've been doing with our Community Development Director, Ms. DiMaggio, and also with the rest of our staff. Thank you so much for your time, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so now we move on to our regular agenda. First item on the docket is seven alpha, our 2020 Second Quarter Financial Report Memo. Administrator Krugel?
Mayor Haig, members of city council, Zach Dowd, Finance Director, will present the Q2 financial report for the city of LaSour. One thing I will note is, and you likely have seen it in the report, is that, you know, generally, when we started the year off, we started a little bit lower than what we ever have in the past three years. So you'll see that kind of trend continue. But we do have some good news about some things that are happening as well. So I'll turn it over to Finance Director Dowd, and he can fill you in on all the details.
Welcome, Director Dowd.
Very well, Mayor Haig, how are you?
Good. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Fantastic. Again, I'm Zach Dowd. I'm the Finance Director here. Just want to introduce myself, just in case you may have not seen my face or heard my voice. Thank you, Mayor and Member of City Council for having me tonight. Just want to go over the Q2 report. Please, let's stop on the slides that we, if you have questions on any slide, stop and talk about them, so I don't have to try to go back. But the graph you're seeing here on this first slide is the cash balance for just the general fund. So this is not all funds that we have within the city, but just the general fund in focus. As City Administrator Krugel had previously kind of alluded to, our cash balance started about $400,000 below what we had normally started with for the year. So our yellow line is where we're at currently, is with the squares on it, yellow squares. Basically, our purple line was the line for 2019. So this purple line with the circles on it is where we started in 2019. So to 2020, about $400,000 behind. So we end June about $400,000, $500,000 behind or so, based on funding. But at the lowest point, we were about $350,000 behind where we were in 2019. We've had normal operations, and I'll get into those in the next slide here through 2020. So nothing crazy has happened in 2020 that would make this as astronomical year, besides the fact we started behind. But 2019 was a tough year for the city. We had some over expenditures in public safety, some over expenditures in public works that have been talked about. We also had a bunch of flood expenditures that we had to do for remitting for the flood in 2019. Crazy years, you know, this one's a kind of a hot year, and last year was a really wet year. So crazy things change within a year. But those three main areas are the main reasons of why we're starting behind this year. The city staff, along with city council, has really tried to, you know, kind of back up from those expenses and really try to hone in on increasing the cash balance in the general fund. I think we're going to do really good things this year. And so far, in July, we've received the CARES money, which we received. I'm not sure if City Administrator Krugel has updated the council on that, but we have to, we get the CARES money from the state. We got about $308,000 of CARES money that went into the general fund here to start off the year. We are going to allocate that depending on where we need to for what expenditures we've had. Um, we are going to allocate that depending on where we need to for what expenditures we've had related to COVID nineteen and the pandemic that is occurring. But we are able to use those dollars at any, in any one fund. Um, specifically, it's going to be focused on the community center fund. And the general fund. So between those two, we should have a split of that three hundred and eight thousand. We've also received the LGA dollars, received those on July twentieth. And those were five hundred and some change, five hundred and thousand, I believe, was the payment for the first half of LGA. So we did receive those dollars. Again, we can expect the same, um, LGA payment in December. So those are something to look forward to. And also the, uh, the tech and half tax payment comes in October-ish time period. As you can see from the previous graph, you can see there's a spike in October and that a spike has to, has to do with property taxes. Otherwise, we are doing our best we can with staff to limit, um, expenditures and really try to focus back on. Limiting those expenditures and having additional revenue. So any, any focus on the general fund at all? Any questions? For the next slide here then. Hearing none, you know, go to the next slide. This one is going to be the general fund income statement. You're seeing the revenues and expenditures. This is what I'm noting for any major things that are happening during the year at all. Um, at the bottom, I'll start with the bottom line first and then I'll go back through details. You can see the bottom line says five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars behind. Basically where we thought we should be at. You know, we did receive that LGA payment, five hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars or so. Um, and that's going to help us. That's basically brings us back to straight zero, which is exactly where we are hoping to be at this point. Um, we have a lot of expenses that happen at the beginning of the year for one-time dues, one-time subscriptions, one-time insurance payments. Things like that that happen only once during the year and they normally happen in Q one. Of our, our fiscal year. So, uh, those are things that we don't have to pay for twice or three times. So if we're. Basically even at midway through the year, we should be pretty good, um, point for end of the year focus. So revenues are down a little bit. I'll go back to the revenue spot. Revenues are down a little bit just to do the timing of payments. Again, the big one is the LGA, about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and that came in July. So just again, just behind the Q two report, but we did receive it. Um, that was the main revenue focus. I mean, we are a little behind in license of the permits. So permits have been up this year related to people being at home, having time to do those permits. So we got a lot of miniscule permits. So we have our building officials very, very busy, but not generating a whole lot of revenue based on a number, you know, number of permits way up. Dollar a month permits, um, not so much. We've got a lot of, you know, deck permits, you know, re-rough permits, stuff like that, but don't really generate a lot of revenue for the city, but do keep our building official very, very busy. And other revenues, number three, we did receive a reimbursement. Uh, in the revenues area for the flood, it's about forty, what did I say, forty-five thousand dollars. We're hoping to get a little more from the FEMA, but you know, based on the COVID nineteen pandemic, it. Uh, may or may not happen. I'm not sure. Um, you know, we're, in twenty nineteen, we for sure, we're going to get it and then this happens. So. Funding can be scarce at the federal level at this point, but.
And that's additional forty thousand dollars if I understand that correctly.
That would be what we're hoping for. So that would be huge for us, but again, I don't want to put all my ducks in one basket if I don't think it's going to happen. So. Uh, let's go on to expenditures.
Zach, if I may, if I may add just something about the, the building, uh, department. We do have a couple of big, uh, kind of commercial permits in the queue, one being the, the Valley Green Square Mall redevelopment. And then also, um, what you're going to be talking about here shortly, uh, that Meadows two development. Those are two pretty substantial. Uh, commercial permits that could hit this year. So, um, that would definitely send that, uh, the building, um, building department definitely into the blacks. So. Um, if those two happen. So I just wanted to note that because we, we know that those are, um, you know, on the horizon potentially.
Correct. Yeah, those two, those two permits alone are. In the seventy to eighty thousand dollar range, just those two permits alone, which would hit our revenue number or budget number for building permits for the year. So. Those are huge, huge building permits if we can get those. Um, we'll move on to, thank you very much, City Administrator Krul. I forgot to mention that. Thank you. Um, we'll talk about expenditures quickly. Number four here, the biggest one that we're looking at is forty-three thousand dollars over budget in the city administrator. This has to do with COVID nineteen related expenditures. So this is mostly, um, us transitioning to having more, um, online meeting stuff. Being able to access documents and, uh, Microsoft Office three sixty-five. So we're able to do something remotely. Working remotely, having software to be able to do that stuff. Um, as Costa, you know, it is expensive to do those things if we don't have anything in place and we didn't at the moment. So those expenditures can all be reimbursed to those CARE dollars. So we have money there. But the budget number obviously was not, you know, planned for having those expenditures happen. So those are reimbursed from us already, but we just need to, you know, note that they are non-budgeted expenditures. Also, we have one-time payments that happen out of the city administrator, um, budget mostly dues and subscriptions. The biggest one is CGMC, uh, which is roughly about eight thousand bucks a year, eight, eight to nine thousand dollars, which is a one-time thing again, but we'll even out as the year goes on. Um, the big thing on the bottom there, unallocated expenditures and insurance. And allocated expenditures, we have not spent as much as we thought we had, we're going to, which is good. This is where our contingency is sitting at. Um, remember last year we used all of our contingency dollars on the flood expenses. So we did remain that hundred thousand dollar contingency number in the general fund when we started the, when we started the budget year. We have not. Have dipped into those as much as we did last year. We, I think we spent about thirty thousand dollars of that hundred thousand contingency dollars so far, just miscellaneous projects. Again, mostly related to COVID nineteen stuff that has happened mostly for hardware and other things like that. Um, and then insurance, uh, based on insurance numbers that we got at the beginning of the year, we're going to be good to go for the budget. But then, uh, they always seem to increase those. City Minister Krugel and myself are always worried, wondering about that with the budget processes. They never gave us final numbers until after we approved the budget. Which is just fantastic for planning. Um, and we were just talking about this the other day when we were going through the budget numbers to begin twenty twenty-one planning. Is we put a larger increase in there than we, you know, had done in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. So, uh, this is just planning on, you know, knowing that they're going to increase. Insurance probably more than what we thought. Which is just fantastic again for planning. So we are, we're going to be over budget with there, about twenty grand. But I think that can be made up with the contingency dollars and then also in the building permit side as well. If we're going to, you know, get those couple of building permits or other revenues. We're really hoping that we can also hone in expenditures too, um, which we're really shooting for, for, at a staff level. Anything related to general fund at all, income statement related?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. Forgive me. Something, obviously the print is relatively small. And on the top of the screen for go to meeting, there's a zoom feature. Where you can increase the size of the font. So you can read these documents and then you just use your mouse to scroll through it. So it's much easier to see, quite frankly. I don't know if that makes any sense. I hope it helps.
Oh, yes. That's a, that's a very good tip. Thank you. Does everybody see how to do that?
You go to the zoom, you can pick. The percentage that you want. It's under the, uh, zoom two. Then you have fifty, seventy-five, hundred, et cetera. And you can scroll the document with your mouse. Clicking on it down in the document. Really does help. Zach, I apologize for interrupting, but sometimes we can't follow otherwise for looking at particular number.
No, I totally understand. I try to make it as big as possible, but then when you get a little screen, it makes it even harder. On, on a big TV, it looks great, but on a little tiny computer, it, it hurts your eyes. So I get it. Thank you very much. Hearing no question on the general fund will move on. Um, this will be the cash balance side of things, mostly just the big picture again. May want to use the zoom feature on this one because we have quite a few funds within the city of La Sure. Um, if, if you guys are not, you know, aware of the, of how city, you know, government accounting works is that each fund is basically their own business. So the city has very, very, you know, lots of businesses underneath them and we have to manage all of these at the same time, which makes it government accounting very, very difficult to do. And we'll hit on the big ones that I've noted on the one, two, three, four, five, six numbers on the right-hand side. I did note some of the big ones on the left, uh, items to note, but I'll talk about these as well. We're talking about the general fund, maybe about five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars down. Again, we started about four hundred thousand dollars behind and then a hundred and thirty-seven thousand is related to even, either not hitting revenue numbers or, you know, being lax on the. LGA because we haven't received those yet. So those things shouldn't, it shouldn't be too much concern from last year. You know, we may have gotten LGA and I know we got a, uh, there was a twenty percent payment in May of twenty nineteen that we did not receive the same thing in twenty twenty. Um, that was a one-time thing that the state did to try to get funding into the smaller cities earlier. Um, it didn't work as well as they thought, so they didn't do it this year in twenty twenty. So that has a big effect on that as well, that five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Uh, number two, capital lease fund. This is just a gap, um, item that we had to do during the twenty nineteen audit. I know it's on the Q one report. But just wanted to make sure it stayed noted on the Q two report that this number will then, you know, move back to zero. I have to do a transfer. So you'll see that in October. From the CIP fund because in CIP fund is where we budgeted that. That's why it starts out negative. We budgeted for it in the CIP, but I have to move the money from the CIP to this fund to start off with. Uh, so I moved the expenditures during the twenty nineteen audit based on auditor's requests, but I did not move the money yet. So that will be back to zero basically. So you'll probably have, again, another change from number in future years, but that's just to be noted.
Zach, if I could add something, um, not everybody's an accounting whiz. GAAP is general accounting practices, just so everybody knows. Zach threw that acronym out there and it, it, yeah, it's general accounting practices.
Sorry. Generally accepted accounting practices as close enough. It's good to go, but I apologize about the acronyms. I know that the mayor always harks me on them acronyms, so I apologize about that. Um, so we'll talk about, uh, number three and number four. So number three has to do, that's fund five oh seven near the bottom half of the page there. That's up sixty thousand dollars. Um, that has to do with, we receive special assessments when people sell their homes. So if somebody within that area. That was worked on that project, sold their home, they have to basically, you know, kind of true up their assessment balance before they could sell their house. And that's typically taken care of at closing. So those numbers are taken care of by the county. Um, when we do, when they do sell their home, that check comes to us and then we consider that a special assessment prepayment. So that that special assessment no longer goes to the new owner, but the previous owner will pay that off for them during the closing process. So we have received a nu- numerous number of those. I think we've received. At least eight or ten, just this year alone with home sales. Um, as you can imagine, home sales are pretty crazy these days. Um, and number four, part has to do with that. So again, more special assessments have been received again in that project, which is a two thousand and six C bond. But the other portion has to do with, at the end of the year, there is a, um, inter-fund loan that has been given to the sewer fund. Through this special assessment, um, it was done, I don't remember what year it was done at, but it was a year that the sewer fund needed money. We did an inter-fund loan from this. Uh, fund in order to help out the sewer fund in a one-time cash balance transfer. This loan will be paid up once this fund is over. Basically, they made the inter-fund loan as long as the fund was open or the bond was open on this fund. I believe it's open for like two years, two or three years, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Not mistaken, but that's just off the top of my head. Again, I can't remember exactly. Number five and number six, electric utility fund. This is up, mostly has to do with the fact that we have, um, increased our rates this year from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. And also we have had no major expenditures. So last year we bought a boring machine. That machine was very expensive, around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so, I believe, um, again, off the top of my head. But that was a very expensive machine. We have not had anything like that this year. And with the increase in rates, that has helped us dramatically increase the cash balance. Um, the goal for this fund is to be back basically at a zero cash balance for the year twenty twenty. Number six, stormwater fund. Yes, Mayor Hague.
Question in regards to the, uh, we just, the, uh, the GEO improvement bonds. When you have a situation where you have an individual that sells their house, uh. Like, like you mentioned, we had these nine, uh, home, these nine people or whatever that sold their homes this year.
Yep.
This gives, this gives the city the opportunity to pay that bond sooner. Than what the anticipated, uh, uh, retirement date of that bond would be, correct?
On some bonds. So some bonds are callable, which is a callable bond. We normally pay a little higher interest rate for those. Because at any point after a certain time period, typically those are on fifteen-year or twenty-year bonds. So after about ten years, we can call them and pay them up in full if we have the monies to do that. So that's called the callable bond. Typically our interest rate is about a quarter to a half percent higher on those kind of bonds because it has that risk that we're not able to. No, we're able to basically pay it early. This bond is not that way. We have to pay the bond over time. So basically what it does is allows the city to earn a little bit more interest. By holding those funds in a, um, 4M fund or a, uh, which 4M is the. Investment fund that the city has that they can invest the dollars in or in a bank account, one of the two, whatever one's better for interest rate at the time. Um, but that allows the city to earn a little more interest by having the money in pocket basically versus having to wait for those dollars. Although we don't receive interest on those dollars when they're out there. So. And when the special assessment is listed, we are normally one percent over the bond that we list. So. We'll earn, I don't know, uh, for example, it's a two percent bond, we'll earn a three percent interest on that special assessment. But we don't earn the interest if that special assessment is paid in full. So it's kind of a double-edged sword for us. Um, we like to have the money in pockets. We can invest it, but at the same point. It would be nicer and one, you know, one percent more interest than what we're paying on the bond as well. Does that make sense?
Well, I appreciate that answer. Yeah, definitely. I, I appreciate that answer. Just quite frankly, I thought that, uh. We would be able to go ahead, but I did not realize that there was something called these callable bonds. So, yeah, thanks for that explanation.
Yeah, of course. No problem. Thanks for the question. That's great questions because, you know, if, if you don't know the answer, I'd rather have you ask and me find it out than. You just, I guess, not know, which is never good. Uh, okay, we'll get back to number six. Um, this most likely will be on there until next year when we start paying for the CASA twenty-two project. This fund was started back in twenty seventeen, a stormwater fund. It has increased every year because we haven't had any expenditures out of this fund besides one small stormwater repair that we had to do. Um, in the parking lot by the library. Other than that, there's been no expenditures out of this fund whatsoever. This is, this has been a rolling fund trying to get a cash balance in this fund prior to our CASA twenty-two project, which we knew was coming on board. Um, so in, now that this project is underway, we are going to be, um, selling a bond here at the end of the year. The city will be selling a bond. And part of that bond will be paid for back with the stormwater utility fund versus having to pay for with tax dollars. So planning ahead by the city, um, will save tax dollars, uh, for its residents in the future. Any questions other than no? Okay, move on to the water fund. There's a couple of pages between here and there. This basically just shows. You know, where our money's at right now for the city council. I don't show that on the record. Um, the investment dollars of it are, you know, within 4M fund or the local banks. That's all, that's all basically we have dealt. So I won't go over those, but I will touch on the water fund now. So I show this water fund every time, pretty little graph that we've done in the past. Um, is on the bottom right and the income statement is on the top left. So the income statement again is the revenues over the expenditures. We'll look at the bottom line number first, which is the third column from the right. Actual through six thirty twenty twenty number. As you can see, we're a positive two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars through six thirty, which is a fantastic number to be at. The water fund has been performing very, very well for us as a city. Um, and that is something that we need to look forward to, um, in the future is that this is a very healthy water fund. That we will be having expenditures out of in the near future. If you reviewed our CIP CEP that was approved for twenty twenty during the twenty twenty budget process. Obviously there'll be an updated one of those, CIP CEP, but, um, the water fund does need some. Major, major expenditures in the future here. So we're planning for those ones. Again, by planning in the future, we'll save ourselves some substantial increases in rates in the future. But, uh, touching base quickly, um, revenues are pretty much right on par, ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars over the, what they were last year. This also has to do with increase in rates again. And the miscellaneous dollars are under budget. Um, those has to do with basically being nothing, no major revenues we've received from miscellaneous dollars. Miscellaneous dollars here are bulk water sales we have or any other miscellaneous payments that we received from water, um, work that was done for the city. It has nothing, has nothing substantial this year that can be noted. So that is why we are under budget or under last year. Um, we're still about eight thousand dollars under budget, but nothing to be worried about at this point that, uh, in my eyes. Uh, expenditures were nineteen thousand dollars behind. That's number two on the sheet there. Nineteen thousand dollars behind are basically ahead of where we were last year, but still under budget for the year. Um, this has to do with the fact we have not as many expenditures as supplies, but you know, we have had a few more, um. Repair items that we've had to do for supplies related to, um, water main maintenance and fire hydrant maintenance for this year. Uh, number three, the lease payment. This is again, we saw this in. Payment for.
Hey.
This is our lease, this is our lease payment for the, uh, capital lease that we did, which is related to the, uh. Equipment that was purchased in twenty nineteen, which was a three twenty-four fund that we talked about earlier with the. which was a three twenty-four fund that we talked about earlier with the two hundred and some thousand dollar, um, negative dollar amount uh, in the previous page for cash balances. So it's the same lease, just how, where the money was used for, twenty-one thousand dollars is the bond payment over the next seven years for that. And then number four, we had a hundred and ten thousand dollars of capital all A purchases so far. Um, nothing major has happened that we've had to use five hundred and fifty-three thousand, which has been budgeted for. Again, those are major, major expenditures that we're probably planning on doing a bond for in the future, but they are within the C I P C E P fund for the twenty twenty fiscal year. Any questions related to capital all A?
I just wanted to go ahead and, I just wanted to say that uh, the last few months, we've been able to go ahead and get our uh, water loss uh, down below ten percent. So, I'd like to go ahead and congratulate staff for all the hard work they've done and certainly now with the smart meters and being able to determine all of our various piping and tying those to meters. Uh, you've achieved uh, something that uh, notoriously, we get hit on each and every year. It looks like maybe this might be the year where we won't see that on the audit. So, great job.
That's our hope. Yeah, it's been a, it's been definitely a, for myself, at least I can say it's been a group effort for sure. Um, Rich Kuchera, Public Services Director, has been a fantastic asset with having, you know, dealing with the piping and the actual infrastructure. I've been dealing with the billing side of things. Jester's kind of been holding over everybody else. And then, you know, Communications Director's been fantastic with communicating everything to to residents and stuff like that. So it's been a group effort for everybody to do that. Um, I'll touch base quickly on the graph, just kind of show what the pretty graph means. The green line basically means where our sales are at for the year. Um, our typical numbers, what we're shooting for is they have the green line above the whole bar. And we've had that for the last three years and we're shooting for that again for twenty twenty. Um, the bottom one is orange, basically can we cover our current expenditures? If the green line is touching the orange bar, it means that we're going to lose money for sure because we can't even cover our own expenditures. The next line is the gold one. Basically, that's another cash one that we have to pay out. That's the bond principal amount. Reason why that's added in there separately is because based on GAAP again, generally accepted accounting principles, you have to do a journal entry out of bond principal every year, so it does not show up as an expenditure. Um, but it is an actual cash expenditure that we have to pay. So the reason why that is separated is because it's not considered a current expenditure, but we want to show it every year. And then the blue line is depreciation. That's to say that at the end of the year, can we cover our depreciation or can we buy that same asset that we've depreciated over X number of years if it breaks? Um, this is not a cash thing, however, but if we can't cover depreciation, that means we will not be able to afford that asset once it is useful, life has been depleted. Now, just because it's useful life is depleted, doesn't mean it's dead. It just means that our, that's our best guess at when that asset will need to be replaced. Sometimes that guess is good, sometimes that guess is bad, but it's uh, basically a best guess for us to say the useful life is going to be X number of years. And then that asset is depreciated over those X number of years. Um, again, it's not a cash thing, so if the green line is within the blue, we can still, you know, maintain our cash balance. But again, we won't be able to afford that asset. With this line being above both of those, we are in a very good place at the, within the water fund. Um, you'll see the same graph for the next three or four slides, so I just wanted to make sure I explained them all well now. So you saw the next graph, you'll understand what's going on. No questions on the water fund, we'll move on to the sewer fund. This one has always been notoriously our hardest fund to maintain. Um, mostly has to do with that P F A loan and the water wastewater treatment plant that we have within the city that has plagued us for very many, many years. Um, twenty twenty-seven can't come soon enough. I'll tell you that much, once this bond is completed. Um, but at this point, we are doing as best we can as, as we are given. And we'll touch base on all the numbers here quickly. Number one, in the little income statement on the top left, uh, two hundred nineteen thousand dollars above where we were last year. That has to do with the change in rates, also with some of the meter things. So um, correcting some of the meter issues that we had that the mayor had alluded to that we, you know, correcting during billing process, otherwise collecting some of the water that we're losing and billing that out and such has been a huge, huge asset to us for charges for services. This is also related to having the uh, AgriPure and Henderson billing within the city and no longer having um, the joint powers agreement MRF Puck within the city of La Sueur. So the monies that are coming in from uh, all operations are actually going to charges for services, not just some of them. Um, the miscellaneous dollars, basically the main thing there while we're under budget this year is because uh, we see, we received a reimbursement from AgriPure in the beginning of twenty nineteen that we did not have in twenty twenty yet. We have not, I billed them out in July, so they will, will receive that payment sometime hopefully in August or September. They're normally pretty quick. But that's why the change in revenue from years is there. Um, number three, salaries and benefits. They are over last year. This has to do with the fact that MRF Puck is no longer around, which is that joint power agreement we had with the city of Henderson. Um, those dollars were then put into what they call a six oh six fund or a different fund within the city. And then would be reimbursed by this, um, by the city and MRF Puck for that time. So because that time is no longer being reimbursed and just shown directly in the sewer fund, that is why the increase there um, is there from last year. However, we have spent less time in the sewer fund than we anticipated, so that's why we're only sixty-six percent of budget. Uh, that is based on a one hundred percent based on time of our water wastewater employees and where they're spending their time at and how much we budgeted for their time in this fund. This is a good thing now they're under budget, um, but it's also the fact that they have extra time there that if they need it at the end of the year, we can have um, time allocated to the wastewater fund in order to uh, do operations within that fund. Number four, supplies. Supplies are up because we no longer again have, no longer have MRF Puck within the city of La Sueur, but we um, are budgeting much more than what we are spending for. Um, we are not spending as much on supplies that we anticipated on. Mostly has to do with utility, utility rates and such that we're um, just because we're not using as much or the rates are, you know, the same for the city as they are for everyone else. But just the time that we've spent with those utilities, along with supplies, just in general, we have not needed as many as we budgeted for. This could be the fact that we were using MRF Puck numbers and our numbers as well. So some of those numbers could have been combined and, you know, doubled up uh, during the budget process. So this is a good thing for this year, but one more year under our belt, we should be able to put a good budget number together for those expenditures um, in total. Number five, capital all A. We are under, we are over last year again, has to do with, you know, mainly capital items that we're using it for, but we're way under budget. Um, we're really trying to hold on expenditures. Um, we've basically put a hold on these unless they're absolutely needed based on the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we are forty-one percent of budget at this point for capital. Any question in the income statement at all, the sewer fund?
Something worth noting, I guess, would be that uh, if I read this correctly, uh, there's a good possibility that our sales could exceed our expenditures this year, and uh, that will be the first time that's ever happened, if I'm not mistaken.
That would be correct. It's been, I mean, it may have happened in the, in the past, but it's been a long time since that happened within the city since the P F A loan for the wastewater treatment plant has been in place. Which is um, a great goal that we set with um, personal and budget committee at the beginning and then with city council um, at the end of twenty nineteen for twenty twenty. Our plan was to just break even basically and not lose any more money within this fund. Um, I am really hoping that that is coming true, but, you know, at the same point, we still have a million, uh, one point one-ish million dollar payment that we made to P F A in July um, this year. So that does not show up on Q two report. Um, again, that's the Henderson portion and the La Sueur portion of that P F A loan. So that is a huge hit to this uh, graph overall, is that one point one million dollar basically payment we have left to P F A this year. So Q three, I'm hoping you say the same thing, Mayor. How's that sound?
Great, thank you.
So again, the far right little graph there, I'll go over quickly again. The bottom bar again is the current expenditures. The green bar is the bond principal. The orange line is our revenue number so far. And then that brown line on top is the depreciation. So as you can see, every year, basically that we have on this graph, we've never even covered our expenditures we've had so far. This year, it looks like it's just touching the top. So I'm, you know, we're, we're there. We're, we're now covering our expenditures, we're able to cover our bonds principal. I'm really hoping again in Q three that we are able to stay at that point and not be in that green area. Because if we are, then we are not covering our expenditures. Cross our fingers, yes.
Exactly.
Any questions on the sewer fund at all? Okay, go to the electric fund. Same kind of thing here, same, same deal. Um, again, I'll touch base, same graph on the far right and same income statement on the top left. Number one, uh, eighty-six thousand dollars under revenues this year. This one hundred percent has to do with less power. As you can see, number five in the list there, purchase power, we're down sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we're also sixty-seven percent of budget. And then for revenues, which is the number one, we are, you know, eighty-six thousand dollars below last year, but seventy-eight percent of budget. So, again, this is something that um, I wanted to note that if we sell less power, we will make less money. And the reason why is because we have a slight percent markup on all of the charges that we get charged from our provider. So if we sell less power or if we use less power, we will make less money in this, within the electric fund. It's kind of a, a game of cat and mouse where we don't want to pay a lot for expenditures, you know, we don't want to use all the power. But if we don't use power, then we can't bill it out. So it's a good issue to have, but it's also an issue to have because we need to sell more power to make more money um, within the city. So this is something just to be noted for. We're still in the black with this, but it's just something to be noted. Um, number two, we are under budget for supplies and still way under budget for this year. We just haven't used as many supplies as been needed. I think this has to do with mostly with the COVID nineteen pandemic. We have, we've kind of really focused on just maintaining personnel and maintaining just normal operations versus doing more project in the city. Um, which is, you know, a good thing and a bad thing at the same time again. Um, number three, other services and charges, we're thirty thousand dollars under on that one. That has to do with timing of payments. Um, also, we have rebate programs that have not been used as much as we thought they would be. We did just issue a rebate um, to L S I for about eleven thousand dollars, which was in the disbursement um, report. I believe it was this, this time or the month or the two weeks ago of the council meeting. But that was a significant rebate that we've given out. At this point, you know, in, through Q two, we hadn't done so many rebates as we done in um, twenty nineteen. Number four, building by bond principal. Again, this is related to the capital lease, so I'm not going to touch base on that. And number six, capital all A. We've spent a little more money on capital all of this um, time and that has to do with the meters um, and final payments for N I S C for the util, new utility billing software that is put into the capital all A. Um, those were um, budgeted for in twenty twenty, but we have not used any other of those for twenty twenty. Any questions on the electric fund?
Zach, this is uh, Councilmember Crowgley. With COVID, let's, I want to talk about the less use of electricity, therefore less be billed for it and of course, less income for us. Is, uh, can you give us a general feeling for how much of that is residential and how much is industrial or business? Based on the fact that with COVID, there's been a lot of cutback on the business side.
Correct. Um, I, I could touch on it a little bit and then I'll refer to City Minister Kurgul, but most of our, you know, we, we do receive a lot of revenues from our businesses within town. Without those businesses being in, you know, in full operation, we have seen a significant decrease in electricity used by those specific businesses within town. Um, residential electricity usage is up slightly. It's not up crazy amounts, but it could be the fact that people are using L E D light bulbs, being a little more conscious of their electricity usage, but it is up for this year based on people being at home, you know, people were basically at home for two, three months at a time. And those businesses were not open, so those businesses were not using as much electricity as they had previously used. Um, I'll refer to any other questions that are, maybe City Minister Kurgul can add addition to that at any, any point.
Yeah, I, I'll just add a couple of things, just kind of moving some numbers around. So like sixty-five percent of our sales come from our industry. So the, the uh, reduction in, in our sales, which I believe is right around ten percent overall for kilowatt hours is mostly related to all of our industry. Our residential sales, as Zach stated, are up. So um, it's really related to our industry not operating for as many hours out of the day. I think everybody's operating. Now, I, you know, some of our large industry um, was shut down for a short period of time. But um, you know, generally our sales are, are, are decreasing sales are related to our industry and, which is, you know, I think v-very much related to COVID nineteen. Um, you know, at this time, there's no, you know, revenue reimbursement, but what we do is we actively manage the budget. Because if our revenues are down, we have to then reduce our expenditures kind of on the fly. Because if we don't, then we're going to be uh, in a deficit at the end of the year. So we've been doing that. We've kind of hit the pause button on some of our capital improvement plans, as Zach alluded to. And we're just going to see what happens and how it shakes out at the end of the year. But I think we've, we've done a, a good job of of balancing what we're actually seeing in usage and, and, and our expenditures to make sure we're not in a, in a worse position at the end of the year. And I think that's generally what we're trying to do for every fund that you see, saw on that list, is just actively management, manage it. If revenues are down, we're, we're modifying uh, expenditures so that at the end of the year, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be in deficit. So, but yeah, it's mostly related to industry.
Thank you.
Yeah, the smart hub system certainly uh, must be uh, something that's getting quite a bit of use, both from their, our industry as well as our residential accounts, I'm guessing. Uh, is there any way of knowing how many people have signed up uh, for Smart Hub?
Um, I don't know off the top of my hand, or top of my head, but I do know that quite a few people have signed up for Smart Hub. We've gotten a lot of feedback on it with signing up for it. We've helped quite a few customers get, you know, into it, get signed up for it, whether that's because they want to do electronic payment, E F T recurring payments. Or if they want to just be able to view their usages and set up alerts and set up limits and so whatever else. Um, I don't know if any of our big, big users have been using it. I have not been in contact with AgriPure, which would be the one to use it, or L S I. The biggest two users probably in town of those um, areas, but I know that they have been in contact with me about questions about Smart Hub and using it. So I don't know if they haven't been signed up yet or not. I have not checked recently, but I could definitely get a number for you if you want for the Q three report.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Okay, and I'll talk quickly about the graph in the bottom right there. Again, it's the same kind of graph. Current expenditure is bond principal depreciation. As you can see, our revenues are above all of those, which is fantastic. And the only thing I want to talk about quickly is the how much kilowatt hours billed, used as of date. Um, which is the bottom number on your left-hand side, income statement there. As you can see, it's six thirty nineteen, it was forty-one million kilowatt hours we billed out. This year as of date, it was forty million eight hundred and twelve, so it's a about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar kilowatt hour usage less that we've billed out for twenty twenty versus twenty nineteen. Um, we alluded to that earlier, but most of that has to do again with our industry usages because those are big, big users and they can use that much electricity in a quarter pretty easily. Not hearing any more questions in the electric fund unless I miss somebody. Go to the community center fund. This one's going to be quick and simple because community center fund hasn't been, you know, community center hasn't been open really at all in Q two. Um, March was in Q one and April through June, nothing's happened. Uh, we've, you know, we had uh, basically go on absolute pause. So number one, we're way down on charges for services this year. That one hundred percent has to do with, we are not turning anybody for memberships. We took all the, we, we sent a bunch of refunds back to people for their prepayments if they did a year membership or a quarter membership or whatever it may be. All the refunds came out of there because they're directly related to those revenue numbers and not have to increase our expenditures by showing those because refunds are returned basically for them. So that isn't counted as revenue for us. Uh, number two, uh, supplies are way down, again, because we haven't been open. And number three, miscellaneous dollars are way down again because, again, we haven't been open. Uh, most of this has to do with community education and the miscellaneous dollars do. We haven't had any many, really at all, community education classes until probably this last month of maybe July and a little bit of June, but not much. So those are way, way down. Again, that has to do with community education classes. Um, the, we noted, we have done some changes within the community center with being closed and we changed the software. That has been noted earlier. I think we was in a meeting in June, I believe, is when we approved that new software to be used, um, called Rec Desk versus our Max Galaxy software that we had before. This has allowed us to basically not have the community education classes go through our books anymore. So at the end of the year, the books for us are income statement, revenues versus expenditures, maybe under on both sides and that has to do with community education classes one hundred percent. Because we're trying to just have them go through the school district and not through us at all as a pass through. Um, there may be a couple more months worth of those pass-throughs because they're trying to work with Max Galaxy and Rec Desk to get them to communicate properly. But at this point, um, we're trying to really basically separate those two things so that we do not have to um, cut them a check every month. um, cut them a check every month for their, you know, their dollars and memberships and classes and such. As you can see in the bottom right graph, um, we did just a simple one this time for the community centers expenditures versus revenues. Um, we are not meeting expenditures this year for the community center. Again, those differences there, um, most likely have to do with the fact that we are going to get proper taxes for the second half of the year, that's another two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars for the second half. So you can add those basically into that green line as an automatic payment, that's what will happen in the second half of the year. But the expenditures will not grow as much as they did in the first, you know, as in the first half of the year. Because unless we have the same exact thing happen, we were going to be actively managing again those expenditures to make sure we are at least even, if not a little bit in the black for this fund because it is started again at six hundred thousand dollars now. As you can, um, remember back to audit. So we are trying to get that thing basically back to even for this year so we can focus on next year. And starting to do a, um, five or ten year plan to get that fund to zero. Any question in the community center fund? Or any other funds I talked a lot earlier this presentation?
Anybody?
Um.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I'll, I'll give it over to city minister Krugel, thank you so much, mayor and members of city council.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to receive our second quarter twenty twenty financial report for the city of La Sure.
This is council member Krugman, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Hearing none, if administrator Krugel would be kind enough to go ahead and, uh, call the vote for receiving our twenty twenty second quarter financial report memo.
Yes, sir. Uh, council member Faviles.
Aye.
Council member Kirby.
Aye.
Council member Krugman.
Aye.
Council member Schleter.
Aye.
Council member Sullivan.
Aye.
And mayor Hague.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we've been now at it for, oh, almost an hour and a quarter. Why don't we go ahead and take a recess till, uh, let's go to seven forty-eight, six minutes, okay? Seven, seven forty-eight, five minutes. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for recess.
So moved.
Second, Sullivan.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven forty-eight, everybody. Thank you. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to resume our meeting.
Favulous, so moved.
Thank you. Take a second, please.
Schleter, second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, good deal. We now move on to seven Bravo, pedestrian walkway ordinance repeal. City administrative approval.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, uh, before you is, uh, potentially the first reading of an ordinance that would, uh, remove an existing ordinance that would allow us to, uh, open up Main Street. Uh, this is important, uh, because in order to do so, we need to not declare it a pedestrian mall any longer. It would be just public right of way. Uh, one question that came up is it wouldn't automatically be a road if we do this, it would just be, uh, public right of way and we can designate it whatever we'd like. Uh, the idea is that this was, this was done, um, you know, previously and we need to do it in order to uh, do the plans with the mall. Um, it's something that we found in code that needs to be, uh, repealed. So um, I'll turn it over to, uh, community development director DiMaggio to kind of fill you in on the rest of the details.
Welcome back, director DiMaggio.
Thank you, sir. As councillor, as city administrator Krugel had said, it, um, was pointed out to us that in the ordinance. It was adopted via four fifty-two, it's actually chapter seventy-five, so it's kind of weird, it's chapter seventy-five, but it was adopted via ordinance four fifty-two. This was adopted on December fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight. Um, there was language put in there about the pedestrian mall and that it was basically going to continue being a pedestrian mall and that no vehicular traffic can go through there. This was pointed out to us by Bob Overly, I think he was mayor around the time when it went through, so he was nice enough to tell me that this was in the ordinance. So in order to remove it from ordinance, we, we actually have to go through and have another ordinance repealing it, that's how you would remove it. So that's what I'm asking tonight is to waive the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance was in there for your review, basically it says that with this new ordinance, we repeal the ordinance that was adopted on December fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, Mr. Ed Rasmussen was the mayor back in, uh, December of nineteen ninety-eight, uh, Mr. Overly might have been a member of city council during that time, but, uh, we appreciate the fact that you pointed it out to you, director DiMaggio. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Uh, ma- mayor Hague, if I may point out one thing, um, uh, we do have, we have had, I guess now two legal opinions on how we would be able to repeal this. Um, one from our previous council, Todd Coriel. And then now Mike Corey has also looked at it and said, yes, this is the, the proper way to go about repealing this. So we have uh, reached out and, and received counsel from our legal counsel on this, uh, matter.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. Anybody? I'll entertain a motion and to waive the first reading of ordinance five eighty-eight and ordinance repealing and deleting chapter seventy-five traffic schedules from city code.
Favulous, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Hearing none, administrator Krugel would be kind enough to go ahead and do the uh, vote for waiving the first reading of ordinance five eighty-eight and ordinance repealing and deleting chapter seventy-five traffic schedules from city code.
Yes, sir. Council member Faviles.
Aye.
Council member Kirby.
Aye.
Council member Krugman.
Aye.
Council member Schleter.
Aye.
Council member Sullivan.
Aye.
And mayor Hague.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We will bring this back at the next council meeting on August tenth for the second reading.
Kidoki. Next item on the docket is seven Charlie, La Sure Meadows Tiff, call for public hearing, administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, this process should be familiar to the group, uh, it'll be very similar to what we just did and, and completed with the Valley Green Square Mall redevelopment project. Um, if this is related to the Meadows Two project that we talked about a little bit. Um, and I'll, I'll hand it off to community development director DiMaggio to give you the details.
Welcome back again, director DiMaggio.
Thank you, sir. So on, um, December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, which is today, the EDA just authorized resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero seven. This is a resolution asking you, the city council to hold a public hearing on the potential establishment of Tiff District twenty-one. This, um, district, if you would hold the public hearing, it would be on September twenty-eighth, I believe. This would be, yep, December, or excuse me, September twenty-eighth. So the city council is being asked to authorize resolution twenty twenty dash zero one eight. A resolution calling for a public hearing on the establishment of tax increment district twenty-one in the La Sure redevelopment project area one, which is basically the city of La Sure is project area one. And, um, this is a twenty-six year Tiff is what they're asking for. They are asking for ninety-five percent of the Tiff, which is approximately seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-three cents. The funds will be used for the new construction and for the rehabilitation of the existing apartments. So we talked earlier, these existing apartments were built in two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand three, something like that, I think it was authorized in two thousand one. So they're probably completed around two thousand three, so they're about seventeen years old. They have gone through and created a list of the improvements that they would like to do. Um, the improvements are close to two million dollars, so the increment isn't going to cover near what they would like to do. So they'll have to maybe make some tough decisions as far as if we move forward with this, what they do with the increment or not. Um, so you will have a separate business subsidy hearing that will be held on September twenty-eighth to look at this. This would be a pay-as-you-go Tiff, if you could go to the next page, please Jasper. And so the city council is asked to authorize resolution twenty twenty dash zero one eight. A resolution calling for a public hearing on the establishment of tax increment financing district twenty-one within the La Sure redevelopment project area one and approval of a tax increment financing plan there too. So we will ask Shannon Sweeney to start working on the tax increment financing plan for us, just as we did with this last one, you'll be able to see copies of that, we'll also have a development agreement that we will put together with La Sure Meadows. And if this does go through, then La Sure Meadows would ask us to cancel Tiff fourteen, which is currently in place.
And just to be clear, director DiMaggio, that, uh, we only used a portion of Tiff fourteen, if I remember from what you were saying earlier. Uh, we would not have to pay off that additional, uh, monies.
Exactly. What's, what happened with Tiff fourteen is they had originally approved it. And then four years later, they modified it, they had some additional land and they were going to build some townhomes adjacent to it. And then they never ended up building those townhomes, so they never ended up capturing the full amount of Tiff that they would have had. If you don't build what you say you're going to build, you're obviously not going to generate what you think you're going to generate. So they never generated the full amount, so they weren't paid the full amount. So it looks like to date they've received around, I think it was three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so that would end and they know that. And then this new Tiff would start off. So between both Tiffs, if you looked at it that way, they would get close to a million dollars, but we would end up with almost eighty apartments in town if you combine both Tiffs.
Understood. Any other questions for our community development director?
Mayor Hague, this is, this is administrator Krugel. One thing I will note is that, uh, there was a typo in the original, uh, resolution that has been emailed out to all of the city council. But basically the first whereas had the Valley, Valley Green Square Mall redevelopment indicated it was a kind of a copy and paste deal, uh, that has been updated, that was emailed out, uh, what you'd be evaluating tonight is that revised, uh, resolution.
Okay. Anybody? Then I'll entertain a motion then to authorize resolution Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one eight, a resolution calling a public hearing on the establishment of tax increment financing Tiff District number twenty-one within the La Sure redevelopment project area one and the approval of the tax increment financing plan related there too.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Krugman, second.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none, if administrator Krugel would be kind enough to go ahead and take the vote for uh, the Tiff twenty-one, La Sure Meadows.
Yes, sir. Council member Faviles.
Aye.
Council member Kirby.
Aye.
Council member Krugman.
Aye.
Council member Schleter.
Aye.
Council member Sullivan.
Aye.
And mayor Hague.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the docket is seven Delta, the fee ordinance update, administrator Krugel. Thank you. Next item on the docket is seven Delta, the fee ordinance update. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hank, members of city council, again, this is Samantha DiMaggio item. I will hand it off to her. Basically, this is an ordinance looking for the first reading to update this ordinance for the fees related to emergency protection services. And I'll hand it off to Ms. DiMaggio.
Director DiMaggio, welcome back. You've been busy.
I know, sir. I, I feel like I'm confusing everything, but this should get it all straight. Jasper, will you please go to the next slide for me? So this is somewhat confusing, but hopefully this will help make sense. In city code, we have Section 30.50, and this is what's called fees for emergency protective services. This was originally passed with an ordinance 516, and then they updated it in 2015 with ordinance 554. So those are the first one and the kind of the last one that have updated it. In this ordinance, there are three state of Minnesota statutes that are quoted. There's statute 366.011, which is charges for emergency services and collection. 366.012, which is collection of unpaid service charges. And then there's 415.01, Town Laws, Applications, Use of City Powers. So this ordinance talks about these, these three state statutes. So if you go onto the next page. With these statutes, the city also has the authority to collect for other things. So with Minnesota statute 366.012, we have the ability to collect for unpaid service charges. So these service charges could be related to planning and zoning fees. They could be the cost for recovering obstructions from the right of way. They could be for repairing damage to the right of way. Or even any type of roads that if someone comes in and asks us to vacate a road and then we almost look at that as the planning and zoning fee, but really if we were to vacate the road, we could charge that back to the property owners adjacent to it because they basically get the land back that comes with that vacation. So state statute gives us the ability to charge back for these things. If you'd please go to the next slide. Right now, in our city code. So what's happening is how the state statute works, let me go over this first. How the state statute works is the towns have to give written notice. This is very similar to what we do with our unpaid utility bills. So we have to give written notice to the property owner by September 15th that they have unpaid service charges for us. Then we have to certify these charges to the county auditor by October 15th. They can then take these service charges and put them on someone's tax statement so that they have to pay us back. This goes as other taxes. So the property owners have to pay these taxes. It's a way for them to have to pay us back. And like I said, we do this right now with our utility bills. If you charge utility bills and don't pay us, we can put those on your taxes and get paid back through property taxes. This is the very same process that you can do. You can do this then for your zoning, your right of way, things like that. So if you don't pay back these taxes, then the property obviously would get forfeited. So Jasper, if you can go on to the next slide. Right now, we have language in our fee schedule that states that any of these activities that we're going to do for planning and zoning, they could be charged back to you for these out-of-pocket expenses. So for legal and engineering expenses. So we can send someone a bill right now, but really they don't have to pay us, right? We can just send them a bill. We don't, we don't have it in our code that we have another mechanism to charge that. Also with our zoning code, we've told people that you're going to agree to pay any outside legal fees that we've had. So we've been very clear to people that they have to pay these fees for us. But what we would like to do now is be able to say we would also like to use state statute. And so we want to be clear that we're using all of these in the same manner at the same time. So we're saying, if you have a planning and zoning fee and it costs us $6,000 in outside legal work because of some of the stuff that went with it, let's say they came in to do a preliminary plat. We got outside legal people and then they decided to walk away. We could actually bill against that property then so we can get our money back. It's just a way for us as a city to have a way to charge back for people. Right now, we've told them, you're going to pay us these fees and we put it in our zoning code. We've put it in our, our fee schedule, but we want to have another way to be able to charge these fees back. And the state of Minnesota really gives us that way. So we just want to make sure that our code states that. So I've gone through our code and found that we've already been doing this, as I said, for our electrical bills, and we've also been doing this for our emergency protection. So if you were to call the fire department, they were to come out, you didn't pay the fire bill, they could charge it back to you. So they're using the same mechanism that I would like to use for planning and zoning and right of way restoration. They're already using that. So what I've done is I've gone through this section and kind of updated it to include those other items. The other recommendation that I made to the, to the fire chief was that instead of putting his fees in the ordinance, that we move those into our fee schedule. Because anytime he wants to do this, then he has to come back and update the ordinance. So that's what they did in 2015. They came back and had to update it via ordinance. Whereas if he puts it in our fee schedule, then annually we can look at it and if changes have to be made, it's much easier to do during the budget process rather than having to have two readings of an ordinance. So that's kind of what I'm asking tonight is, like I said, we're already saying that we're going to do these things, but I just want to make sure that all of, all of our ordinances line up with each other and that they're synonymous with each other, these different sections of it. So that's what I'm asking tonight. Jasper, will you go one more page, please? So what I'm asking you to do tonight is, of course, to waive the first reading of ordinance 587. This is an ordinance updating city code, which will now be 3050 fees. Does this make sense? Everyone, it's, it's a lot of information, but as I said, it's a way for us to, we've already told people we're going to collect this money. It's just now enforcing the mechanism that we can do it with.
So just, just to be clear, so currently we're, we're billing these people, but in essence, they're not paying us.
Well, we haven't even tried to bill them yet because I think once some of these people see their bills, they're going to be very upset. It's a lot more, our legal counsel and our engineering and using Nate's services are not very cheap. And we've had some people who have decided not to move forward with applications because we've warned them a little bit about the cost of this. And I think that's something that, you know, I'm adding to the applications now, making sure that people are very clear that they know that any outside time is going to be billed back to them. But what's happened from our perspective is our budget has been completely eaten up off of a couple people who have had some projects. So basically, the rest of the taxpayers of Lassure have been paying for these one or two people that have projects. And so now I have other people that, you know, I can't even call and ask Nate a question because I don't have any money left in my budget because of these one or two people have really eaten up our budget. And so what we want to do is make sure that people know that we want to help them with their applications. But if you're going to continue to come back and make changes and have issues and, and keep asking questions and not agree with what we're saying and want to have more, you know, people look into it, that does cost money. And so this is what we're asking you is just to make sure that everything lines up together and that people know that we're going to be billing you back. We've already said it. We've warned people in our, in our different areas, but I, like I said, I want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, that all of these things line up with each other.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea that we're going to be including this within our fee schedule too, moving forward. So that way it can get updated annually by the Personnel Budget Committee and approved, obviously, by city council. Great idea. Does anybody have any questions for Director DiMaggio? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance 587 and ordinance updating city code Section 30.50.
Fabulous, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you, sir. Any final questions? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the vote for, or the, the roll call for the vote for Section 30.50, fees for fees, fees for fees for emergency protection services ordinance update.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby.
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman.
Hi.
Councilmember Slater.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
And Mayor Hank.
Hi. Thank you very much, Director DiMaggio, for taking care of this for, for us. I know it's been an awful lot of work and something that certainly needed to get done.
Well, thank you, sir. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the docket is seven Echo. It's our community center. Our community center operations. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hank, members of city council, this is the community center item that we talked about on Thursday at our work session to bring it back and officially make the policy decision to open the facility up or evaluate that decision. So yeah, that work session was held on January, or July 23rd. Direction was given to formally bring this back to city council. Staff is recommending the following, and I'll go through each of these kind of items in detail again, so we can just make sure that we're all on the same page. Is to open the fitness center, the gym and the racquetball court on September 1st, 2020. We would use the new member, or new rate structure to market and renew memberships. We would, we were looking for approval of the discount levels and direct staff to allow only one discount per membership package. And then we would approve the personnel changes as described. One thing I'll go into a little bit is the opening procedures i- if we are directed to open the facility on September 1st. We're looking at staffing the facility from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so 12 hours. We would like to go and have somebody in the office until 10:00 PM. We may extend that if we can get staffing secured. That, that last three hours of the night is difficult to do, but we will try and, and that may change that the staffed hours to go until 10:00 PM. Right now, I'm saying seven because we've only been able to confirm that with, with existing office staff. Daily health status forms will be required, similar to the outdoor pool. Every time somebody comes into the facility, they're going to have to sign off on the, on the form that says that they don't have the symptoms of COVID and that they're healthy. You know, we, we had that with the outdoor pool with every patron. It was kind of centered at children at that time, but we figure it is good to have that with everybody and, and sign off. It's, it's kind of a pain to do, but overall, it really brings that awareness to light for everybody that comes into the facility. And during those regular staffed hours, we will be doing temperature checks on, on individuals that are, that are coming through the center. This is similar to the outdoor pool as well. Now, there will be unstaffed hours from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So a 12-hour stretch in the day, maybe shorter if we can have some staffing, where users will have access to only the fitness center. And I will note with this, the, the locker rooms and the indoor pool will be not accessible. One thing that will help us out is the door project that was approved kind of prior to the COVID times starting. So we do have a very good system as far as controlling access to the various areas with, with electronic key cards. So that'll be very helpful. During those unstaffed, unstaffed hours at night, users will still be required to sign the waiver form. The waiver forms will then be cross-referenced with the door log when people are scanning their cards. And if they happen to come in with, maybe you come in with a, a, two people, we'll also check the video log and, and make sure that everybody at night is filling out that form. We also ask that those, when those people are using the facility at, at those after hours, I'll say unstaffed hours, that they're doing a, a good job of sanitizing their equipment, going back and, and making sure that they're washing everything down because we will not have somebody coming in there during those times when we're unstaffed to do like the, the sanitation procedures every two hours. And we don't think that there's as many people that will be coming through as they will be during the day, but we'll definitely keep an eye on it. And if there's a, a large influx of people and we say, well, we need to make sure we have some staffing going on there, maybe from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. You know, we'll, we'll do our best to make sure that we have somebody staffed and then maybe at 8:00, there's a sanitation period where we can clean all the equipment. If this doesn't work, we'll, we'll definitely communicate that with city council. The 24-hour access is something that will be a challenge. We're going to monitor it in real time. And if it's just not working and we don't feel comfortable with it, we would move to just a staffed hour timeframe. We want to make sure, we, we do, one of the goals is we want to make sure that we can open it up 24 hours. I think that's one of the, the benefits to this, but if it's not working out and we're, we're having troubles meeting some of the guidelines that, that are out there, we would make the recommendation to go to just staffed hours. Sanitation procedures, I'll talk a little bit about that. We would require the cleaning of each area after two hours if used. So let's just start with the fitness center in general. Every two hours, there will be a break. Everybody has to go out and there'll be 30 minutes of, of rigorous sanitation going on. The same goes with the gym and racquetball courts. Basically, after any use of those, the racquetball courts in, in particular, there will be some sanitation going on in there. And we'll kind of watch that because those two areas aren't used as heavily as the fitness center. So we'll have to actively manage that and make sure that we're meeting those sanitation guidelines. Any questions about just kind of the opening procedures? I know it's, we still have, if, if this is approved, we have a a month to really dial it in and make sure that we can get staffed, but the, the goal is to get, get it staffed as much as we can. And, but we know that it's going to be a challenge getting, you know, into the, the later hours of the evening. So it's our, it's our goal to get it staffed as much as we can.
Administrator Krugel, question for you in regards to staffing. So let's just say that the idea is to go from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM with staffing. How do you plan on staffing that now? Is that with our current resources or is this going to be a part-time position type of thing? Or what do you, what's your thinking on that?
Nope. So all of that would be is our seasonal office staff that we have, and we have a good group. It's a pretty large group of people that we can, that are accustomed to it right now. But they generally don't work past 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. So going till 10:00 o'clock would be a change. We would try to market it and, and maybe we might have to incentivize going that late because we acknowledge that there's probably going to be people there from 7:00 to 9:00 in the evenings, maybe more so than, you know, some other parts of the day. So it's important for us to try to get it. We're going to try to do it. But it would just be seasonal staff, no full-time staff or part-time staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions before I go on to the next section, rates? All right, moving on. So.
Jasper, apologies.
Yep, no problem.
Krogman, I had to get the mute button off. I'll be very candid and tell you, I'm willing to vote for the unstaffed portion, but I'm relatively uncomfortable with that. And would expect that staff will somehow be monitoring that. I mean, we have, how and what else, we know if they're really cleaning and who's supposed to do it? Is it the former user or the new user? Who's going to watch out for this? We're, we're opening something without any staffing at all. And I, I'm willing to try it, but I think we have to be very careful with it. That's all I have.
Yep, no, Councilmember Krogman, I share the same concerns. Excuse me. And what we can do is we have, we have video up there. We can see when people are doing it. We're going to sign it like you've never seen things signed before. You know, telling people to both when they're done using it to sanitize it and then when, even before they use it to sanitize it as well. So it's kind of getting double sanitized per se. But if it's not working, we'll be the first to tell you it's not working. It's not something that we need to do. I think we, we want to do it. I think the community wants us to do it. But if, if we don't feel comfortable as, as staff that it's, it's happening and we don't think that things are getting sanitized and the members are sanitizing to the, to the, to the proper level or just that there's too many people going in at those hours where we need to monitor it and we can't get staffed. We'll say, we're going to move to just staffed hours and we're, we're going to try to make it work. And so we'll, we'll be monitoring it very closely. That first day, we'll be watching basically every patron. You know, during those unstaffed hours to see how they're reacting to the, the different things that are going on there. So, but at, at the end of the day, what we're, what we want to do is be able to staff until 10:00 o'clock at night. We feel, you know, the time between 10 and 7:00 AM, there aren't that many people using it. So if we can get it staffed till 10, I think a lot of those worries are alleviated from, from our perspective. But they're still there. We want to make sure people are following those rules.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Favelas, please.
Jasper, questions for you here. One, will people be signing up previous to, beforehand to be able to use the facility so you'd know how many count is going to be in there? Because of, because of guidelines. The next is, is that every facility that I know of across the states that are opening, that, that are now open or, or every facility that I know of across the states that are opening, that are now open or operating had their members sign a, sign when they're because essentially you're renewing a membership. They're signing a document that says that, that they will wipe the equipment down before they use it and they will wipe it down after they use it. What are your thoughts on this?
Yep. So the waiver form that we envisioned would have that, some language in there saying that you take responsibility to wipe it, wipe it down before and after. So we would work that into that. You know, we wouldn't really work it into when you sign up for a membership because we really want to have daily logs of who's gonna be there and who's not. The first question, what was the first question again? Sorry, I didn't write it down.
The first question is about about how many people, are people going to be signing up to be able to use the facility during certain time slots like you're doing right now with the pool? How are you going to monitor that during, during a 24-hour concept?
Yep. So right now, the plan is to not set up the blocks of time. Because one, we found that people aren't generally using it for the for the pool. Some people are. If it becomes an issue, we can always add it back in. So like if there's more than, more than the capacity at 7:00 AM, let's say, you know, we can add it back in. Right now, you know, it's not being used as much as what we anticipated for the outdoor pool and people are just generally showing up. It, we will be monitoring those people during hopefully those times where it's busier and we'll be actively managing how many people are in that facility, obviously when we're staffed hours. So we can kind of gauge to see what the, what the usage will be. If it gets to the point where it gets like, yeah, there's, there's a lot of people that are using this facility at one given time and and we should do this and only have it be like the two-hour blocks of time. That would limit us from being able to even go out into that unstaffed hours period of time unless we just kind of made that call to do so. But what we're gonna be doing is actively managing it during the staffed hours. We're gonna gauge what it's going to be like. If there is a big demand, we will, we'll set up the block time. Otherwise, we'll just say, yep, it's full. You have to wait until, you know, 10:00 to get in.
I would make, I would make sure that when you're putting this documentation together that you're being, that we are being upfront in the documentation that says that the policy could change at any time and that it's based upon the usage and the safety of all members.
Okay. Yeah, and I know Allison is listening in on this too, so she's taking notes, but you know, we're gonna, what we want to do is, the goal is to try to have it be available as much as we can. If we don't feel comfortable as a staff, we'll make that call and say, you know, we just don't feel comfortable that things are working out the way that we plan and we'll make changes on the fly. But really what, we don't think that there's gonna be an influx. I think, you know, we've talked about this before. We think we'll see a lot of people that are excited that the facility is opening, but they might not start showing up to it right away. So, but we'll manage that actively and if there's changes that need to happen, you know, I'm all for, you know, we can set that up. It's just, it is a, it does require some time and it really didn't even, it doesn't get used much at the pool. So if that changes, we'll definitely add it. Any other questions about opening procedures? All right, I'll move on to the proposed rate structure. This is the same as what you saw on Thursday night. What we would do is a month-to-month only, and you'll see the discounts on the other side of this page. But month-to-month only, only one discount is applied. So if you're a senior, you'd get 15% and that's it. If you're, if you don't have any, if you're not a senior, veteran, or emergency services personnel and you sign up for the fitness center and the gym racquetball court, you'd get a 4% discount on the total package. So what we're looking at is, you can see in front of you, the fitness center for a single membership would be $30 per month. If you wanted to go to that two-person, we would be adding that back in. We removed that at the beginning of 2020 or at the beginning of 2019, we'd be adding the two-person back in. So you'd get a two-person membership for 45 and then a family for 60. If you, obviously the indoor pool, we're not planning on opening up. I should have removed it from this, but that was included just for reference, you know, for the 2021 budget discussion. And then the ice arena during, when we have open ice, which we're planning on, and I'll talk about that a little bit, is September 26th. If you want to sign up for when we have open ice, you can use the ice arena. That's $15 a month. And then the gym racquetball is $20 a month if you would like to use that. And you can see the different changes, the increases for a two-person and a family. The discount packages, these are the same as what you saw on Thursday, senior discount of 15%, a veteran discount of 15%, emergency services for 10. If you, if you pick two packages, you get a 4%. Three packages, a six, and a four package, if you pick them all, which is only for certain times of the year that you can actually do all four, you'd get an 8% discount. Any questions about the rate structure?
Yeah, Administrator Krugel, I think it's worth pointing out again the importance of the one discount package per membership, because I think the way it's been in the past, we have some that might be taking advantage of multiple discounts. And the key here is that you're only entitled to one discount. Period.
Correct. That would be the intent moving forward. All right. Any other questions about rates or discount packages? All right, the last section is talking about personnel changes. So what we would have is we'd have two full-time employees return at 100% and one would be furloughed at 100%. And then with that furlough, similar to what the furlough situation was or is currently, that employee would receive health benefits through their furlough. We think because we're in a pandemic right now, that's important and, you know, it's kind of what we, what we feel is the right thing to do. So what we're looking at tonight, we're requesting a motion to approve the plan to open the fitness center, the gym, the racquetball courts at the Lassure Community Center, starting September 1st, 2020. Approving the amended rate structure as described, approving the discount packages as described and proceed with the personnel plan as described. We're looking just for a motion for that and I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Anybody?
Favelas, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Can we get a second, please?
Schlitter, second.
Okay. Any final questions? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and call the vote then for the Lassure Community Center. The motion to go ahead and open the fitness center, gym and racquetball courts of the Lassure Community Center, starting September 1st, 2020, and approving the amended rate structure as described and approving the discount packages as described and proceed with the personnel plan as described. Administrator Krugel?
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry. Councilmember Favelas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Kroegman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schlitter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Hague. Motion passes. Thank you.
And last item on our docket is 7:00 o'clock, the COVID-19 Preparedness Plan Amendment. Administrator Krugel.
Yes. Sorry, my kids are getting ready for bed, so sorry, I'm a little distracted. The COVID-19 Preparedness Plan Amendment, what you have is you've seen it in the packet. It's a highlighted area that we basically just add a section for the mask mandate. This is required by Executive Order 20-81 to make sure that our preparedness plan that we've adopted at the city of Lassure includes that statewide face covering mandate. So what we're requesting is a city council motion to approve the attached COVID-19 Preparedness Plan Amendment for the city of Lassure, as described in that attachment. I will entertain any questions.
With the, with the executive order that took effect this past Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, have we had any issues with face coverings that we're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. You know, we basically had a couple people come into City Hall that didn't know or forgot that they had to do it to pay their bill. You know, what we do is we offer them a mask. If they say, you know, that they have a medical condition, we don't go any, any further than that. We do have, you know, signage up at all of our facilities. We have masks available at City Hall before you actually come into the area that our admin assistants sit. So if they want one, there's, they're available. The chamber has secured through deed, I think 12,000 masks that they're distributing to different businesses to kind of do the same. I think the general idea is if, you know, somebody doesn't have access to a mask, they're gonna have access to a mask if they want it. You know, so generally, we've had pretty good compliance at City Hall as far as the citizens that have come in. You know, just, you know, it's a change. Today was the first day for staff, so staff is all, you know, masked up and wearing masks and there's, you know, been some questions that come up. Well, when do I need to wear it here? When do I need to wear it there? Type of thing. And those things are good. I'm glad that those questions are being asked. So in general, I think it's been, you know, a pretty good first day rollout for the first business day of the mask mandate as far as what I've observed. But, you know, there's no doubt that there's gonna be some people that are, you know, not compliant by choice and and, you know, what we're going to do is just, you know, approach that in a manner where we're not asking for specific medical information. If they'd say, I have a medical, if I have a medical condition that doesn't allow me to wear a mask, that's about as far as we can go, you know, honoring the Privacy Act that we have to follow. So, but in general, I think people are pretty good at it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? Hearing none, no, entertain a motion to approve the attached COVID-19 Preparedness Plan Amendment for the city of Lassure.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you.
Favela, second.
Thank you, sir. Any final questions? Administrator Krugel, be kind enough to go ahead and do the roll call vote for COVID-19 Preparedness Plan.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Kroegman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schlitter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Hague.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our regular, that concludes our regular agenda for tonight. Now we'll move into our comments, reports and items of appreciation, and we'll get kicked off with Councilmembers Sullivan.
The only thing I have tonight is we had a Minnesota River Valley Transit meeting two weeks ago. The main key point out of that is we waived the fees again for rides on transit until February of 2021. So rides on transit system are free until 2021 with money from the feds. That's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Schlitter.
I have nothing else tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Schlitter. Councilmember Kroegman?
I have nothing else. I also.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Kirby?
I'm here. Not much to report. Hospital board's not meeting in July. We're gonna be meeting in August and I just want to wish everybody a healthy summer, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirby. And Councilmember Favelas.
I have two things. One, I wanted to thank the city staff and fellow city council members, Lions Club, the the folks that, that put everything on for the music in the park. It was nice to be able to serve to the community with hot dogs and brats with, with my fellow members and Lions. So thank you very much for everybody that attended with that. The next is kind of a shout out to Water Department. We had a, we had an incident where the corner of South Park Lane and Woodcrest, they had replaced a valve and the, on a main, and it looks like there was an issue on the main itself afterwards. And it was late on Sunday afternoon when it started bubbling up, made a phone call and city staff was there almost immediately. They dug the thing up. They were still going around at midnight, pretty much making sure that the water was running clear from everybody in that area. And, you know, to have it done, have it done quickly, to have staff on hand. This is, this is why we have the people that we have. No griping. Pete was out there with a smile on his face and shaking his head going, well, it is what it is. Let's get it done. So thank you to the, to staff. Good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Favelas. And what I have is I just want to remind everybody out there that we have the mayor and three council member positions that will be available this upcoming election. So if you feel as though you want to go ahead and serve your community, this is that time to do so. Please take the opportunity to go either to City Hall or to our website and download the appropriate information. And I believe that deadline is August 11th, that everything has to be turned in. So looking forward to having, I don't know, 50, 60, 70 people signing up. That would be wonderful. Okay. Is Director DiMaggio still with us?
Mayor Hague, I believe she's signed off.
Okay. Okay, Administrator Krugel, why don't you go ahead and be our hammer tonight and give us any words that you might have before we go ahead and adjourn, sir.
Yeah, no, I'll be quick. And I was gonna mention the filing period is, it actually starts tomorrow where you can start submitting that affidavit for candidacy. And it goes until like what Mayor Hague said, July or August 11th until 5:00 PM. So we're gonna be open a little bit later on that August 11th than we normally are to accommodate that because that is in our city code. But, so I'll just mention that. If you, if you need any help, our city clerk Stacy Lawrence is very helpful. She knows that system inside and out. You need to have, I believe it's 25 signatures by eligible voters. And what that means is that only one person can sign up for one member. So Stacy has a a database of signatures and make, make sure that everybody, or that nobody signed twice for somebody. So it is quite the process, but it is interesting and it's a, it's a great time for, you know, civic engagement. You can, you get a lot of people that get engaged and it's, it's great to see. Cassat 22, I'll just give a quick update, is going well. Obviously, they've started working on that Elmwood area by caucus and down to the cemetery. So that is disruptive. It's hard to get around town. Remember your businesses on the south end of town. It might take you a little bit longer to get down there, but you know, it, they would appreciate it. We would appreciate it if you continue to go and use their services because yeah, they, they're part of the community and, and they are a little difficult to get to right now, but you know, they are, they are essential. So that's all I have. I'll keep it quick.
Okay, thank you so much, Administrator Krugel. Go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Favela, so move.
Sullivan, second.
Aye.
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 Everybody?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Have a great, have a great, have a great evening, everybody, and be safe out there, okay? Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.